So, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to welcome you all to the August 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Jones if he would come forward and give us an invocation. Good morning, Pastor Jones.
Morning.
It's always a pleasure to have a classmate in the house.
Yeah.
That's right, somebody from '73.
Yes, sir. Calver High School.
Let us pray. Holy Creator, we humbly beseech thee this day and seek thy presence at this gathering. God, we come first in thanksgiving, thanking you for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And in this place this day, we ask for the presence of thy Holy Spirit to lead and guide all. As this body deliberates this day, may those who come before them come with confidence, with facts, that will enlighten them and enlighten all of us, that as they make decisions that will impact the lives of those who live in this place called Calver, may all they do this day glorify your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Pastor Jones comes to us today from Mount Olive Church on Dairs Beach Road. Did I mention he's my classmate from Calver High class in 1973?
1973?
1973. Phew, 50-year reunion coming up. Thank you, Pastor Jones. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, move to approve the agenda as written. Second?
I have a motion and a second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Today, I do have a public service announcement. Recently, we lost Malcolm Fun. Many of you in Calver County knew Malcolm. He was very active in our community, served on numerous boards, commissions, and will be greatly missed, as I said, in a condolence that, you know, Malcolm served this county. Most people don't even realize the impact that he had, but he made this a better place. And we will miss Malcolm, and we wish his family our deepest sympathies. Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is proclamations. Commissioner Weems.
Yes, sir.
I believe you have the first one.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Director Ober.
Thank you, Commissioner Weems. My name is Julie Oberg, I'm the Director of Economic Development, and we're very pleased today to introduce you to a number of black businesses here in Calver County. So, for the folks who are here, I won't take anything away from the proclamation, I'll let you do all of that. So, for all the folks who are here representing black businesses, if you could please come forward, come on up, and just, if you could just introduce yourself, say your name and your business, and if there's anything else you'd like to add. Come on up.
Oh, can you say it to the microphone, please?
Good morning. Okay.
You're good.
Good morning, I'm Chris Banks, I'm with Exit One Stop Realty in Dunkirk. I've been a Realtor, I was an educator for many years, but now I've been a Realtor for the past seven years.
Come on up. Come on up. Yeah, we're gonna take a picture.
Good morning, I'm Cynthia Thorn Carter, I'm the owner of Smart Ride. We've been in business for 27 years and hope to continue. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My classmate from 1998.
How do you find that so funny?
That's right. I thought it was 2008.
Right, right. Hey, you just scared him. You just scared him.
Good morning. Good morning, my name is Nate Pope, I'm from Chesapeake Wind'sale Cruises, we're based out of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. We do, we've been doing this since 2018, actually 2016, 2018 was our first cruise out. We do four daily cruises, sightseeing cruises, order 42-foot sailing yacht, at nine, 12, 3, and 6. Hope to see all you guys out.
Welcome.
Good morning, I just retired, I'm gonna go sailing with him. I'm Joel Hill, I'm with the Calver County Minority Business Association, I'm the owner of Borean Investigations, a full-service background screening, drug testing, fingerprinting company, we're the best fingerprinting company in the Chesapeake region, but I'm also the CEO of KEMIT Group, K-E-M-I-T. We are a full-service technology integration company for small businesses. We help them with integrating technology into their technology stack.
Good morning, my name's Lisa Hightgroce, I'm the founder of Loving Care Senior Services, and in September, we will be celebrating 13 years. We provide in-home care to adults, seniors, and children. Thank you.
Lisa also serves on our E.
Good morning, my name is Etzel Brown, and I have a small business here in Calver called Etzel M. Brown Jr. Group. It's a small business consulting firm, it's the aftermath of my 29 years at the U.S. Small Business Administration in Washington, and though it's not in Calver, I have a DC-based law firm as well. I also serve as Chair of the Southern Maryland Minority Chamber of Commerce, and I want to take this opportunity of thanking the county for providing funding for upcoming Southern Maryland Minority Business Expo on Saturday over the bridge in University System of Maryland, Southern Maryland campus, from 11 to 5. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Treasure Thomas, I'm the founder and CEO of My Mustard Sea. We're considered an urban farm located in St. Leonard, Maryland. We're a family-operated business, and we're local growers of microgreens. Our mission is to inspire communities to take control of their wellness through plant-based products and traditional services. We look forward to growing, we've been here since 2019. We attend local farmers' markets, and we also e-commerce online.
Good morning, I'm Candy Bishop, I'm the CEO of These Lights, I've been in business for a year and a half, and also a CEO of Crown of Glory Hair Salon, and I've been open 13 years.
Good morning, my name is Elizabeth Ashley, I'm the owner of Calver Dog Academy, and this is Syl. And Syl is 15 weeks old, she's just a baby, and she is working on her service dog skills. So, thank you for having us here today. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Brian Parker, I'm the President of the Calver County Minority Business Alliance, I'm also the owner of the Elite Marsh Arts Academy and Elite Protective Services, and I'm happy to be here.
Hopefully, we don't need you today. You need me, everybody.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Christine Coats, I'm the owner and CEO of CC Professional Tax Services. I am also the treasurer for Calver County Minority Business Alliance. I'm glad to be here, thank you.
You don't need that.
I am Saul, and I am with the Kids Campus Academy.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Yomi Badmos Momoni, I am the owner and director of Kids Campus Early Learning Center in Dunkirk, Maryland. I am happy to be here, it has been interesting being in Calver County, thank you.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Hello, everyone, my name is Bonnie Barrett, and I am the First Vice Chair of the Calver County Chamber of Commerce, and I am here today to thank each and every one of you for your contribution to our local economy with your businesses. I also know many of you personally, and know that you give back to our community in a large way, and for that, I personally and on behalf of the Chamber are proud that you are here, and we are proud to know you. Thank you.
And I just wanted to also add, thank you all so much for being here today, and I wanted to announce that we've been working with our CMR group on a number of different videos to highlight different black businesses here in Calver County, and so we'll be doing some social media posts and some video posts, and we're very excited that you were willing to partner with us and for being here in our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. Whereas, National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 by Frederick E. Jordan Sr. and William Templeton to recognize the contributions of black-owned businesses throughout the country and to encourage their continued development. And whereas, black business ownership increased 28% from pre-pandemic levels, generating approximately $165 billion in annual receipts. And whereas, nearly 32% of black-owned businesses are in healthcare, and 35% of black-owned businesses are owned by women. And whereas, Calver County is home to black-owned businesses that provide family-supporting jobs and careers to residents throughout the county, serving as the driving force for the Calver County Minority Business Alliance. And whereas, local governments, chambers of commerce, and business associations throughout Maryland must continue working towards inclusion, empowerment, and support for black-owned enterprises. And whereas, Calver County encourages its citizens to support black-owned businesses in their communities during the month of August and throughout the year, and pause to reflect on the numerous contributions of black entrepreneurs in our county. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of August 2022 be celebrated and recognized as National Black Business Month. Be further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges every citizen to support our black-owned businesses, given under our hands and seal this second day of August 2022.
Now, we're gonna have to squeeze together here. Okay, on the count of three, one, two, three. Let's do one more, one, two, three.
Troublemaker in this group. Thanks a lot.
How you doing? How you doing, Nate? Good to see you, buddy. Good to see you, man.
I'll see you a little bit later.
Good to see you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
The dog did very good. Watch Mike, he'll take it home.
You're, are you in the industrial park? Oh, in, huh? Okay, I talked to you on the phone one time. Yes, yes, I remember. Yeah. Mike likes treats, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You tell Mike to sit, he'll sit for a treat.
That's the only way we control him up here.
He doesn't work with hush. You can say "speak," and it works, but not hush.
We try to tell him, "Don't speak."
Right. So, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Night Out. Commissioner Gadway? Thank you. Who do we have in here for National Night Out? I know we have quite a few as well. I don't think as many as the last group, but...
Not as many as the last group. Good morning, I'm Candace DiAgostino, I'm the Coordinator of National Night Out, I mean, of the Calver Alliance Against Substance Abuse, and we do help coordinate National Night Out. We have a number of our representatives here today and some of our law enforcement partners. If you don't mind, can I call them up, and then we can take the photo?
Absolutely.
Okay. I do want to share that we have a CASA board member here, Craig Contra. Our law enforcement partners who are here today are Sheriff Evans, State's Attorney Bob Harvey, Detective Sergeant Kemery Hunt from the Maryland State Police Barrack U, and First Sergeant Bruce Bavard from the Maryland State Police Barrack U. And then, if my communities don't mind, if you would like to step forward and introduce yourself and what community you're from, that would be great.
Hello, I'm Carla Hans, and this is my assistant today, Nora Clower, and we are with Long Beach, Calver Beach.
Hello, long time no see. Good to see everybody. I'm Tori Baschardt, I'm the Recreation Coordinator, now I've gotten a promotion since I've last seen you, and I'm representing the Harriet Brown Community Center, Central District of Parks and Recreation.
Hi, good morning, Allison Lewis, Bayside Forest.
Good morning, we're from the Huntington Citizens Association, I'm Andrea Hurley, and this is Maddie Hurley, reluctantly.
Hi, Kimberly Repass, representing Oak Tree Landing and Prince Frederick.
Calver County Sheriff Mike Evans.
Captain Ricky Cox from the Calver County Sheriff's Office, thank you Commissioners for representing, and I recognize the National Night Out.
And State's Attorney Bob Harvey, I also am looking forward to National Night Out and looking forward to attending any number of these events. Thank you.
Cameron Hunt from the Young Island State Police. First Sergeant Bruce Bavard, Maryland State Police.
Craig Contra, on board of Directors of CASA. Now, while they're getting ready to take this picture, I can personally attest that night outs work. Our community that I live in, which some of the people here have been by my community, we have a zero crime rate, and that's because our community comes out many, many times. We know each other in the community, we know the neighbors, the neighbors get together weekly. So, I encourage the neighborhoods that are out there, please, get out, know your neighbors, know the vehicles that belong in your community, know the vehicles that don't belong in your community, and remember that you're in charge of the community's safety, and call the police if there's any activity or anything like that. Those that live in safe communities appreciate it, it causes everything to be better all the way around, so night outs do work, and it doesn't just have to be one night a year. We good on pictures?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Whereas, on August 2nd, 2022, the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring National Night Out, a nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program. And whereas, the 38th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Calver County to join forces with thousands of communities across the country in promoting police-community partnerships and crime-prevention efforts. And whereas, the Calver Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Inc., is the local sponsor of National Night Out, and plays a vital role in assisting the Calver County Sheriff's Office and the Maryland State Police Barrack U throughout, through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Calver County. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of Calver County be aware of the importance of crime-prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Calver County. And whereas, police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that August 2nd, 2022 be known as National Night Out in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are called upon to join the Calver Alliance Against Substance Abuse Incorporated, Calver County Sheriff's Office, Maryland State Police Barrack U, and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 38th National Night Out event, given under our hands and seal this second day of August 2022, signed by all Commissioners. Would anyone like to say any words?
I want to say something very quickly before we do the pictures. Not only is law enforcement out there this evening, we also have fire and EMS and local representatives from the Health Department and the library and other organizations. So, if there is a National Night Out event in your community, I would encourage folks to please go out, interact with those representatives who are out there. It's going to be a great night for everybody.
I look right here at the camera, and when you count to three, one, two, three, and you do one, 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 two, three.
Thank you all. Where's Jimmy at today? Fighting crime? On vacation!
Good to see you, thank you.
So, the next proclamation on the agenda is for National Farmers Market Week, and I'm doing that one. So, I think we have some representatives in the audience?
Looks like you just have me, I don't know how to follow those two groups.
Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development, you've heard me speak long enough, so I'm not going to belabor this any longer, but we do have several folks here who are representing the farmers' markets, whether they're vendors or hosts of the farmers' market, so I'll let them introduce themselves, but we've got four wonderful markets here in Calver County, a number of amazing farmers here, so I encourage everyone to support local farmers' markets. And with that...
Good morning, I am Stacy Myler, I am actually the town clerk in North Beach along with the market manager.
Mackenzie Orange, I am representing Calver Health Medical Center Community Wellness Team, and we host the Tuesday Farmers Market.
My name is Donna Sisson, and I'm here representing Calver Health, also hosting the Tuesday Farmers Market.
Hi, I'm Treasure Thomas again, I'm here representing our farm that we administer at the farmers' markets, we're at North Beach for one, and we do a lot of the local farmers' markets, so we're proud to be a part of it.
So, I want to thank all of you for being with us today. We have some wonderful farmers' markets in Calver County, and if you go to the Calver County Ag website, you can find out where those markets are and the hours, and especially I have to thank Erin Farley with Calver Health for all of her efforts. So, I've been to the Calver Health Farmers Market the last two weeks in a row, and they have a great farmers' market back behind the hospital, every Tuesday afternoon, starts at 2:30, ends at whatever, but have great vendors there, and like I said, I spent the last two weeks there, for some reason, I think I'm coming back up this afternoon. So, and they also do it, not to plug that market especially, but they also do health activities, they've had Women's Day, they've had Men's Day, so they, you have to watch, they have special events going on at their farmers' markets to cover all your health issues, not just your nutritional needs. So, if you all have been paying attention for the past month and a half, you've noticed we've done a lot of recognition of our buy-local farmers here in Calver County, support our local farmers, you know, when you buy that food locally, you know where it comes from, you know how it's been handled, you keep that money in the community, help keep our farmers farming, which is why we have our wonderful rural landscapes as you ride around Calver County. You know, I've always said, preservation programs aren't as important as having farmers that actually make a profit so they can stay on the farm. And because of buy-local programs, we have first-generation farmers in Calver County, we have farm, young farmers that have been able to stay on the farm because they get that extra revenue from the value-added of selling directly to consumers. So, do whatever you can to support your local farmers' markets. Enough of a promotion, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas, the week of August 7th through 13th, 2022, has been designated National Farmers Market Week by the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture. And whereas, farmers, ranchers, and watermen provide Americans with access to healthy foods produced locally and regionally through farmers' markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand of a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas, farmers' markets and other agriculture direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy. And whereas, farmers' markets serve as significant outlets for small to medium, beginning and experienced agricultural producers to market agricultural products. In turn, generating... revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas, Calver County citizens recognize the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities to help generate income for farmers, ranchers, and watermen to help stimulate business development and job creation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of August 7th through the 13th, 2022 be known as National Farmers Market Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County encourages all citizens to recognize agriculture's significant role and contribution to the local economy, environment, and quality of life, given under our hands and seal this second day of August, 2022, signed by all five. Thank you.
Our class is here too.
Oh, is that right?
Okay. There's a Calver class here too. Were we 2006? So back then, they did do it by what grade level you were in, so me and Donna had no classes together because he was in all those top ones. And I had to say thank you to come in.
Thank you all very much. The last proclamation for today is Commissioner Hart, retirement.
And Judy, if you want to come on up, please. Your best, anybody want to say anything first before I get started?
I'll start.
So, Planning and Zoning has got to be the most misunderstood department on the face of the earth. It has been the platform for many, many, many politicians, and it probably will till there's no more politicians on the face of the earth. And to work that department, you have to be ready for sainthood. You really do. I mean, it's, nobody understands the process, nobody. I mean, we've been working it because it changes so much and so often, and because politicians change with the wind sometimes, right? I mean, you have one administration in and they want to go this way, and the state of Maryland probably put the most changes you'd ever seen under the O'Malley regime when all of a sudden, all these different regs came in all of a sudden, and then you know that it can change. So the person that's out there doing business for years, they go, I never had to do this before. You never heard that, right? And, and, what do you mean? So, it, it's so, so difficult, and I know you are going to feel this huge. And, and so, we can't thank you enough. It is such, it's so vital too, and I can go on all day. When you move into your home, your business, when you see that little white sticker on there, you say, "Calver County says it's safe for me to be in." That's the assumption, that you say, "Calver County said that I, police won't catch on fire, my plumbing won't explode, my," you know? And sometimes, we appear to be the bad guy, but truly, truly, the heart of that department is we want everybody safe. And we want that when you go to sell that home, sell that business, and the next person goes in there and they know it was done by professionals. So I have so much respect for what you guys do because it's like I say, you have to be... What's that, Steve? How many acts of deeds you have to do for sainthood, you know? It's like right there. Like, he knows, yeah, there were so many good deeds or what have you, so we can't thank you enough for everything. And as we talked earlier, I know you will, yes. So, done my talking there. So, whereas, Judy Holt, Planner 2 for the Department of Planning and Zoning, is retiring on August 12th, 2022, after dedicating 19 years of faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calver County and the state of Maryland. And whereas, Judy's admirable career began on August 11th, 2003, as an office aide for the Calver County Sheriff's Office. She was promoted to Office Specialist 1 with the Department of Planning and Zoning in December 12th, 2005, to Office Specialist 2 on July 6th, 2009, and administrative aide on July 29th, 2015, Planner 1 on September 4th, 2017, and Planner 2 on February 17th, 2020. Judy has provided reliable and exemplary service during her tenure, thereby gaining tremendous respect, trust, admiration from Calver County citizens and fellow constituents who had the pleasure to work with her. And whereas, Judy has consistently gone above and beyond to provide stellar customer service to provide external and internal customers. Her enthusiasm and dedication shined as she went the extra mile to take on special projects, learn as much as possible about the planning field. Judy always had words of encouragement for her coworkers and always available to help anyone when needed. She demonstrated a spirit of pride and commitment throughout her distinguished career with Calver County government. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Judy's outstanding accomplishments, thereby recognizing the remarkable woman who strives to improve the quality of life for all Calver County citizens. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens and congratulations is extended to Judy Holt on retirement after 19 years of reliable, commendable, public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins with community coworkers, family, friends, conveying best wishes for a long, healthy, happy retirement and continued success in her future endeavors. Judy is very close to her family and is retiring to Virginia to spend more time with them. We wish her the best. Given under our hands and seal this second day of August, 2022, signed by all five.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. So Judy came to Planning and Zoning as part of the front office staff, but that wasn't good enough. She was so good with customer service, she would answer phone calls, deal with customers, and it wasn't enough to just push them off to someone else. She wanted to know the answer, she wanted to learn. She was constantly in learning mode and took on helping out with architectural review committees, and with that learning, brought promotions because she was continuing, okay, this isn't enough, I need to learn more, I need to learn more. So, she's persistent, she's consistent, she does it with a smile on her face every day, and I've never received one single complaint about Judy because she goes the extra mile every single time. Judy, we're really going to miss you. Thank you for everything you've done for the department, and best wishes.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, I would like to say something. So, almost, going on eight years ago, when I was very lucky to move into Planning and Zoning, what I found out is that we had an individual there that was making a tremendous amount of money, and Judy, as one of the most junior positions she had, was actually doing that job. So, it was lucky for us that that individual decided to retire early and move on. I will, I will...
He's got so much tact, right? Mark's a brain surgeon too on the other side.
No, and here's the reality of it, Judy is definitely, and anybody that knows her knows this, you can give her the most needy individual and she finds a way to, if she has to, I'm being delicate. If she, if she has to say no, and sometimes the answer's no, she finds a way to say no where there's not this big mushroom cloud that goes up. To include my brother-in-law, so Tom, I hope you're watching, you know, I, I turned Tom, I turned Judy over to Tom so that she could actually solve all of his problems. She just does it inside out, she just never stops. Unknown to her, we have a one-year at-home extension without pay. If we have any problems, we're sending that person to her in Roanoke, Virginia, and she will continue Lynchburg, okay. We, we will track you down, obviously. You know, the idea is that the employees, we have, we have troves of employees like this, and that is not to diminish from Judy. We know that we have very good employees. The problem is, is that we don't often have the opportunity to recognize them like this until they retire or they get Employee of the Month once every, you know, 20 years. So we will definitely miss Judy, and it's nice that HR was able to allow us to move forward and find her replacement, so we're really happy with that, so. And I think I'll see you after 2 o'clock today, right? All right. All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Department of Community Resources, Calver Pine Stormwater Budget Adjustment.
Good morning, Commissioners, Lorraine Joiner, Department of Community Resources, here today representing Director Jennifer Moreland. Background, there are two washouts bordering the driveway surrounding the campus of the Calver Pine Senior Center and housing facilities. Both washouts result from failing stormwater systems. An environmental and engineering study was conducted by Calver Soil Conservation District to assess costs for repairs to the washouts. Washout A is approximately 300 feet long and 30 feet deep and presents a long-term threat to the structural support of the properties. Washout B, while only 175 feet long and 25 feet deep, could present similar challenges if not addressed sooner. Both washouts create liability preventing further needed investment on those properties. Discussion, in May of 2020, Soil Conservation completed its design plans and estimated about $300,000 to complete both projects. Due to rising construction costs, additional funding was sought from the state. Fiscal impact, the state of Maryland approved an earmark under Senate Bill 291 to cover the increased costs for the stormwater repair, which will allow for prevailing wage requirements, inflation, and additional soil and gabion structures as needed. It is staff's recommendation that the board approve budget adjustment number 001CIP, adding the state FY23 capital grant of $630,000. Notice of the required public hearing for this budget adjustment was duly advertised. Conclusion, recommendation, I respectfully request the Board of County Commissioners close the record, approve and adopt the resolution enacting budget adjustment number 001CIP, and authorize the board president to sign the capital grant application, affidavit for lobbying certification, affidavit for religious certification, and any other documents required by the state of Maryland to make capital funding available for the construction of the stormwater conveyance system.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Anything, Mary?
J.R. Cosker, Deputy Director of Public Works. Just here if you have any questions about the project.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a sign-in sheet, nobody has signed in. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak at this public hearing? And there's no one virtually, so there are no public comments regarding this.
Questions? Suggestions?
Actions?
Mr. President, I move that we close the record and approve and adopt resolution enacting FY 2023 budget adjustment number 001CIP, and authorize the board president to sign all documents required by the state of Maryland to make capital funding available for the construction of the stormwater conveyance system.
Second. Have motion in the second that we close the record, approve and adopt the resolution, and that we authorize the board president to sign all documents required. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Thank you, J.R. Thank you.
Second public hearing is for Department of Finance and Budget, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, budget adjustment. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget.
Mark Willis, County Administrator.
So today, we are here for a public hearing for the second round of ARPA funding totaling The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public an opportunity for, to seek comments and to seek the board's approval on the staff recommendations. Anyone that would like to speak in person at this hearing is required to sign up on the sheet to my left. So please come forward now and sign up. You'll be called up at the end of this brief presentation for your comments. Also, if you have called in to speak during the public comments section, you'll be notified to speak by the last four digits of your phone number. So background, on March 17th, 2019, Calver County declared a local state of emergency due to the effects of the coronavirus. The United States Treasury appropriated funds to the state of Maryland in the form of American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. The state of Maryland appropriated these funds in two installments to various state and local agencies in an effort to cover any necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency and recovery effort. The second installment of the ARPA dollars are significant and should be reflected in our fiscal year 2023 budget. The budget adjustment requires a public hearing because it's in excess of $150,000. Again, the second installment that we received was $8,985,948.50 and will increase the Calver County FY 2023 fiscal adopted budget. Staff recommends that after taking public comment, the board close the record, and staff will return in 10 days for, during, for a waiting period, the 10-day waiting period, and for a final decision by the board. The 10-day waiting period, right now, there is no scheduled board meeting, so we will have the 10-day, we will extend the 10-day waiting period to the 23rd, August 23rd.
Today, this action today is just to include the $8.9 million in the budget? It's not an adoption of a spending plan?
Correct.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, sir. There is one person who has signed up to speak, Mr. Cormier, speaking as an individual. He's going to follow Resolution 6-89, adopted to maintain the order and decorum of governmental process. He'll be provided two minutes to speak, and there is no one online.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Joseph Cormier, and I'm from Owings, Maryland. I'm speechless at the amount of money, almost $18 million, made available to such a small jurisdiction. Looking at the big picture, I don't see how we or our children or our grandchildren are going to be able to pay back this national debt. On one hand, I wholeheartedly believe we should be seeking out every grant, scholarship, or dollar in the cookie jar to support our community. Nonprofits like the Calver Marine Museum, our volunteer fire and rescue, the Ark of Southern Maryland, Linda Kelly Animal Shelter, Project Echo, PTAs, band boosters, theater programs, all rely on community support to function, and in this pandemic, you know, families haven't been able to contribute as much. On the other hand, I want and need my government at the local, state, and federal level to use my tax dollars responsibly and effectively, so as we accept this $8.9 million, please be good stewards of not only our taxes, but of our children and our grandchildren's legacy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no other speakers?
Correct.
Questions? Discussion? Actions?
Mr. President, I move that we close the record.
Second.
Have motion in the second that we close the record until August 23rd. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. And there is, you can't, there is a plan that's available for the public to see on how, to date, we've spent those funds and how they've been incorporated in the budget to be spent moving forward, correct?
There is a plan on the first round. We will be bringing the, incorporating the second round funding and bringing it forward for your all's approval on how to spend the second round of funding. for your all's approval on how to spend the second round of funding.
And just wanting to acknowledge Mr. Cormier's comments, you know, at the end of the day, this is taxpayer money flows to us from the federal government, and if we didn't accept it, it would just go back into a big pool and other people would have access to those funds. So we feel an obligation to use all of the, all available funding that we can get to support the citizens of Calvert County, so just wanted to...
Commissioners, the, the first allotment of funding is what we have accounted for. We actually have a spreadsheet that we update because, because we might associate a certain amount of money to a particular project, most often it closes out, not requiring all of that, we move it to another area, we make those journal entries, and we have that up to date. We did, in rough draft, look at into the future, the expenditure of the second allotment of funding, so we do by phasing according to the guidance given, we do have a rough draft of that going forward. I will say that by 2024, we have to have all monies encumbered, and by 2026, we have to have all monies executed, and we're on schedule to do that. And I say sooner than later, but that's because, it might sound like a lot of money, but, and Calvert County might sound like a small county, but expenses for what we do, a tremendous amount of this funding went to public entities like, you know, taking care of our children, taking care of those that need food, and taking care of salaries for our EMS folks. So it's something that we're very in tune with, and when we come back, we will come back with a rough draft of looking to the future for that second allotment of money.
Right. As the Administrator mentioned, there are guidelines on how you can spend that money, and there's a timeline when it has to be spent by, so it's not just free money, we can disperse the way we want, we don't have to follow those federal guidelines. So we will do our best to make sure we meet those guidelines and serve the citizens of Calvert County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Employee Recognition Committee, Employee of the Month.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Wes LaPray. I'm the retired member, the retiree member of the Employee Recognition Committee, and I'm here today to introduce the Calvert County Government's June and July 2022 Employees of the Month. As you know, the Employee of the Month award recognizes and acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance or special individual efforts in the following areas: effectiveness of public contact, respect for fellow employees, quality or quantity of work, improving organizational morale, and improving the county's public image. Anyone can nominate a coworker for this award. Please check out the ERC webpage on the county intranet for more information. Our June 2022 Employee of the Month is Justin Shutt. He's from Technology Services, and he's a Network Administrator One, and please join us up front. Up in front of the camera, yes. They can look at you instead of me, yes. Our June 22 Employee of the Month is Justin Shutt. He played an essential role in standing up what we call the asset management as a new dedicated team of configuration specialists. Assets are everything we own: tablets, phones, computers, laptops, printers, all the network stuff, all these TVs are assets, and they manage them, keep them up to speed, troubleshoot, and keep them in working order. And they deploy them when we get new ones, because even we get to spend some money on computer equipment that is outdated and aged. This team started with three people. They hit the ground running and haven't looked back. Every day, Justin's the first one in the office, and whether working with staff from Animal Control, the Marine Museum, or providing general day-to-day support, help desk support type support, Justin always provides a positive attitude. His supervisor, Andrew Miller, will speak up here shortly, but always knows that Just is always doing because he uses our tool called OneNote that keeps us all aware of what's going on. He always uses his best judgment to make and be sure that each job is completed to the highest standard. When a supervisor is overwhelmed, that's common in county government, Justin pitches in to help. Every Calvert County employee benefits from his positive attitude and work ethic and team spirit. Recently, Justin worked with Planning and Zoning to replace their computer equipment. A Planning and Zoning supervisor provided feedback when asked about this, this award. Justin has been, I'm quoting, "Justin has been a huge help over the past several months. Our office was issued ruggedized laptops, and they proved to be nothing but problematic." Justin was there for all their needs. He assisted in get, with getting the old computers fixed while getting the new devices set up and getting the desktops reconfigured for the new computers. I cannot count how many times I contacted Justin with issues and questions. He's always a super polite and willing to help on a moment's notice. He's always willing to come over and help, or in remote, to see what the issues are and able to correct the issues. It really helps make my job, the supervisor's job, easier with employees like him to assist. The ERC is delighted to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this exceptional coworker for his stellar customer service, positive attitude, and upbeat performance. Thank you, Justin, for all you do. A big thanks also to the Technology Services Department for taking the time to submit this award. And there are a couple of people who want to speak on his behalf. Andrew?
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Miller, acting asset supervisor. So Justin, as Wes said, he joined our team as a help desk technician, just like myself. We split our help desk into two departments. We had the call center and asset management. Asset management was myself, Justin, and another member. The other member got a job offer off-campus, and he decided to leave Calvert County Government. Justin stayed on. Justin did not fret away from anything. Justin took on over 50% of the load of work that we were trying to then balance, and he did it with a smile on his face. I couldn't have had a better right-hand man. Justin, thank you so much for everything you've done for us, and it did not go unseen. He is now a Network Administrator, has been, he's been promoted to the Network Team, so he will continue to grow throughout Calvert County Government, and again, thanks so much, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. On behalf of the county and as a former member of Technology Services, I really appreciate your work, because I had to do some of it over the years, and now it's yours. Congratulations.
Justin, I do have a certificate and an envelope here for you, and rumor has it there's something in the envelope. I'm not really sure what it is, because none of us up here have ever gotten one. So with that being said, though... You know, about a year or so ago, when I came in here, I had to be educated on how to spell iPhone. So I, you know, I thought it was E-Y-E. You guys corrected me on that. So, you know, a couple of times I'd have to call up and say, hey, how come this doesn't work? And they'd say, because you're doing it wrong, you know, but that's what tech services is there to help with. So thank you very much. There is your certificate and something in the envelope. Do we have pictures?
I believe his wife's in the audience.
Oh, yes, please come on up. Would you like to say anything, Justin?
This is how you fix it. I did prepare a few words. I wrote them down in case I got nervous. I do feel very honored to be receiving Employee of the Month. I also feel very fortunate that there are people in my life who push me to constantly improve myself, especially my wife, Courtney, but there are plenty of other people pushing me as well. By working in technology services, I am surrounded by a group of very intelligent and very dedicated people. I am grateful to be working with them, and I can only hope that by receiving this award for myself, it can serve as a representation of the people I am surrounded by.
So Commissioner Wiems, you have the next item on the agenda, Employee, Employee Recognition Committee, Employee of the Month for July.
We have the July, yes. Our, our July 2022 Employee of the Month is Christine Goldsmith, Planning and Zoning. Oh, and she has the audience. I've known Christine for many years, and I don't remember getting that much of an applause from, from, from the audience. It's because she does everything so well, and you'll see why in a minute. Three months ago, Chris was promoted to Development Review Coordinator, who knew, her new position requires a very specific set of knowledge and skills to steer the plan applications through the computer tracking system and development review process that you talked about a few minutes ago. To give you some idea of the scope of her responsibilities, there are currently 167 active plans that must be managed at every step of the development process, review process and tracking it. Chris jumped into her new job and quickly learned these steps, and without missing a beat or a deadline. Her ability to adapt to her new role has been exceptional. Why does Chris deserve this award of Employee of the Month? Well, over the last few months, while learning her new job, Chris continued to perform her former job, as with, as part of the Board of Appeals. So both positions can often be difficult. We have a lot of customers, and they have a lot of needs, and it takes tact and diplomacy to get through most conversations, and she has that. Her Herculean effort required additional adherence to special deadlines, some of them are legal deadlines, in order for the applications to advance. These tasks include intake and distribution of the applications, preparation of legal notices, press releases, notices to adjacent property owners, agendas, exhibits, minutes, and status letters and orders. Attention to detail is the biggest thing in this job, and she's got it covered. Posting the agenda on the web and moderating virtual meetings. In addition, both positions are regularly the first point of contact for disgruntled applicants, agents, property owners, and those who are looking for a quick resolution to their issues. Nothing's ever quick when there's a lot of process involved. As if two jobs were not enough, Chris now had the added responsibility of training a new Board of Appeals clerk while keeping all tasks on schedule. Chris performs these two full-time jobs in an outstanding manner, and through it all, maintains patience and displays a positive and professional demeanor. It's not just Chris's strong work ethic over the last three months that deserves recognition, but every day she displays this quality and is an exemplary employee. She is reliable, professional, and an amazing self-starter. We need that in county government. We can't wait for people to tell you what to do. You have to figure it out, and she does. Whatever the assigned task, Chris can be counted on to provide a finished product that is timely, accurate, and professional. Chris takes pride in her work. She maintains high standards for herself, which she always seems to exceed. The quality of this work is impeccable, and her customer service to both staff and public is outstanding. Chris is an independent and innovative thinker and always seeks to improve in her job. Over the past year, Chris made several changes to the Board of Appeals' application process. We're always looking to do better and make things better and easier. And she did that by providing a user-friendly, user-friendly means it becomes easier. You don't need to be a tech guru to do all these things. That in itself was deserving of an award. Chris realizes the importance of teamwork and is always the first in line to offer assistance. For example, several months ago, an additional staff member was needed to serve as moderator for the Planning Commission's evening meetings. Even with the demands of her time, Chris did not hesitate to volunteer and continues to serve in that capacity. Chris is a genuine, hardworking, dedicated, skilled, and knowledgeable employee. Her kindness, loyalty to her job, and willingness to help whenever and whatever is needed are exceptional and deserving of this recognition. For all of these reasons just cited, the ERC is delighted to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing Chris very much. Special thanks to the Planning and Zoning for taking the time to submit this and attend and encourage her on. Thank you, Commissioners, for your continued support of the ERC, and we hope to do more for you in the future. Christine.
Can I get everyone in the gallery to stand and applaud one more time? Thank you, thank you. Ms. Chris, Wes was speaking extremely highly of you, my dear. And, and I am not going to elaborate and, and with flowery words, I just want to give you a hug and tell you how special you are to the citizens of Calvert County and this envelope. And actually, I'm going to give you this. Well-deserved. May we get a picture with you, madam?
And while you're gathering, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Chris is that employee that everyone wants. If there's ever a need in the department, she's the first one volunteering to fulfill a void. She is, comes in early, and she, most times I have to tell her to leave on my way out of the office. I'm like, are you leaving? She's not leaving till the job's done. She doesn't want to come in with work on her desk the next morning. So Chris, thank you very much for your dedication, your patience, because I know you deal with a lot of difficult people, and there again, always with a smile on your face, and you come in every day ready to work, and that's much appreciated. So thank you very much. Well, well-deserving.
Put your envelope behind you.
But she can't turn it off.
I can. Sorry.
That's the Marine we know.
Commissioners, if I might, I want to add a little bit here. So Christine, there's a book out there called Good to Great. The author is Jim Collins, and it's, the analogy within the, this particular book is the, the CEO's in charge of his corporation like the bus driver is in charge of the seats on the bus. And sometimes you have to move people in new seats, and sometimes you have to move them or keep them in the seat, and sometimes you have to find them a new bus. And, and I think I've probably hit all of those, but I will tell you that Christine is one of those individuals that, I think she's filled most of the seats, and everywhere she goes, I think we can honestly say that the position is paid more attention, she's equally or more dedicated, and she gets more done than we could hope for. So that book, if you read it, Good to Great, Jim Collins, is about, it's both the employee's responsibility and the leadership's responsibility to find the right niche. You fill all the niches so far, so good for you. I think maybe Jim Collins will come back and write an addendum to his current book and add you in there. I know I've, I've followed you through Planning and Zoning, and you've gone from different divisions within there, and you've always done better every time you've moved and made us better. So thank you very much. So, thank you very much.
If I may, I know some people say, oh, God, please don't let her talk. But I feel compelled to say a little something because, as previously mentioned, I'm very fortunate to be amongst a dynamic group of workers in planning and zoning. And were it not for them and their encouragement, their knowledge, their dedication, I wouldn't be here before you today. So although my name may be on this, I want you to know that it's truly Planning and Zoning that is getting this award this month because they're the best.
Oh, very sweet.
Thank you.
Christine, if I were you, I'd ask for a pay raise today.
Yes, sir. Fully noted.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is an appointment. Deputy Director Vasallo.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Vasallo, Deputy County Administrator. One appointment this morning for the Police Accountability Board, and staff is requesting that you appoint Leslie Parker as the mental health practitioner.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in second that we appoint Leslie Parker as a mental health practitioner to the Police Accountability Board for a three-year term. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent. We have two items under consent today. Item one, Department of Public Safety, Somerset County Fire EMS Hazardous Materials and Special Operations Mutual Aid Agreement. Item two, Department of Public Safety, Queen Anne's County Fire EMS Hazardous Materials and Special Operations Mutual Aid Agreement. Are there any objections to the two items presented under consent? Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item one, Department of Human Resources. Director Woodson. Didn't mean to catch off guard there.
Good morning, Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Deana Davis, Human Resources Deputy Director.
Good morning, Deana.
Today, we're here to talk to you about the eVerify Memorandum of Understanding. Background: eVerify is a free web-based system that allows enrolled employers to confirm the eligibility of their employees to work in the United States. eVerify employers verify the identity and employment eligibility of newly hired employees by electronically matching information provided by the employees on the Form I-9 Employment Eligibility Verification against records available to the Social Security Administration and the Department of Homeland Security. The Department of Human Resources currently verifies our employee names and social security numbers match social security records using the Social Security Number Verification Service. Replacing this manual process with eVerify would take the verification one step further by verifying identity and employment eligibility. We would like to enroll in eVerify. It will be integrated as part of the onboarding process in Workday. Fiscal impact: none. Conclusion recommendation: We recommend the Board approve the county's enrollment in the eVerify program and agree to the Memorandum of Understanding attached. The Board's Board President's signatory information will be submitted as part of the online enrollment process.
Any questions? Discussion?
Director, this would help all of HR be more familiar quicker with possible new hires, correct?
Absolutely. Automation and streamline of processes.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve and authorize electronic signature upon the MOU as recommended by staff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, under new business, Department of Public Safety, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department Apparatus Grant. Gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Richardson, Division Chief for Fire Rescue EMS.
Lieutenant Hargrave, Fire Captain, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department.
Terry Anderson, President, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department.
Commissioners, today we're here for apparatus grant for Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department, ambulance 39. Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department is requesting a $395,000 fire and rescue apparatus grant for the purchase of an ambulance. In order to apply for this grant, Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department adopted by resolution formal procurement procedures, procurement committee standards, and contract administration policies. Apparatus specifications received the approval of the Chiefs Council, the Fire Rescue EMS Association, and the Fire and Rescue Commission. Finally, the company has agreed to a promissory note through which the grant funding would be repaid over service over eight years. The county will receive a security deed of trust that will complement the promissory note. The current apparatus has a service agreement in effect through July 1, 2024, with a balance due of $49,125,000. In order to proceed with their procurement, the department requests the Board of County Commissioners forgive the $49,125 balance on this current agreement and release the security interest. Proceeds from the sale of the current apparatus are required to be applied to the purchase of the replacement apparatus and/or equipment. The Fire Rescue Commission's Apparatus Replacement Inspection Committee evaluated this apparatus and are recommending its replacement. The $395,000 requested is included in the FY 2023 capital budget for the purchase of an ambulance. We're recommending the B OCC forgive the $49,125 balance on the current agreement and release the security interest. Approve the Solomon's Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department Apparatus Grant request for the replacement of ambulance 39, and authorize the Board President to sign the Fire and Rescue Apparatus Grant agreement.
Gentlemen. Morning.
Morning.
Do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Just here for any questions.
Any questions Commissioners might have.
So for the public out there listening, most of you know we have volunteer fire rescue service in Calvert County. We, as county government, provide them equipment, and that agreement, that equipment has a life expectancy, and over the life expectancy of that equipment, every year of service that those departments provide is the repayment of the loan for that piece of equipment. Today, what we have before us is a piece of equipment that is going to be replaced before its life expectancy. So therefore, there is a balance due on that grant agreement, which they are asking us to forgive so they can move forward with the purchase of a new equipment. So if you could just explain why we're replacing that equipment a year ahead of schedule, that might be helpful for people listening today?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So due to the nature of Solomon's first-due area, our call volume is extremely high, and the transport mileage that we take from either Calvert or St. Mary's has put excessive mileage on the unit. It's increased maintenance fees and things of that nature, and so that's why we're asking for the early replacement.
So how many EMS calls do you expect to run this calendar year?
Last calendar year was over 4,000. This calendar year, we're about on pace for the same amount, which is 26% of the county's call volume.
Right. And you currently have three ambulances in service?
Yes, sir. We do.
That's right. So just for the public out there listening.
Yes, sir.
So they understand what we're doing here today.
Yes, sir.
So, any other questions? Yeah, they answered simultaneous. I'll nail that down.
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to forgive the $49,125 balance on the current agreement and release the security interest upon application of the proceeds of sale to the replacement apparatus and equipment, and to approve the apparatus grant request, ambulance 39, and authorize the Board President to sign all necessary documents reflecting these approvals. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Item three, under new business, Department of Public Safety, Huntington Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad Apparatus Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Apparatus grant for Huntington Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad, ambulance 68. The Huntington Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad is requesting a $395,000 fire and rescue apparatus grant for the purchase of an ambulance. In order to apply for this grant, Huntington Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad adopted by resolution formal procurement procedures, procurement committee standards, and contract administration policies. Apparatus specifications received the approval of the Chiefs Council, the Fire Rescue EMS Association, and the Fire and Rescue Commission. Finally, the company has agreed to a promissory note through which the grant funding would be repaid through service over eight years. The county will receive a security deed of trust that will complement the promissory note. Fiscal impact: The $395,000 requested is included in the FY 2023 capital budget for the purchase of an ambulance. We're recommending the Board of County Commissioners approve the Huntington Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad's apparatus grant request for the replacement of ambulance 68, and authorize the Board President to sign the Fire Rescue Apparatus Grant agreement.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the apparatus grant request for ambulance 68 and authorize the Board President to sign the grant agreement and all necessary documents reflecting this approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the apparatus grant request for ambulance 68 and authorize the Board President to sign the grant agreement and all necessary documents reflecting this approval. Any discussion on that motion? So for those of you that are listening, the reason that there's a little difference in this motion is that ambulance 68 has fulfilled its life expectancy, so there is no balance due on the grant back to the county. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Department of Public Safety, Huntington Volunteer, oh, nope, sorry, Calvert Advanced Life Support. There's a whole list of them on here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, this is Lib. Andrews.
Christopher Shannon, Chief of Calvert Advanced Life Support.
Thank you.
Commissioners, here for an apparatus grant for Calvert Advanced Life Support for Medic 101. Calvert Advanced Life Support is requesting a $109,000 fire and rescue apparatus grant for the purchase of a medic unit. In order to apply for this grant, Calvert Advanced Life Support adopted by resolution formal procurement procedures, procurement committee standards, and contract administration policies. Apparatus specifications received the approval of the Chiefs Council, the Fire Rescue EMS Association, and the Fire Rescue Commission. Finally, the company has agreed to a promissory note through which grant funding would be repaid through service over three years. The county will receive a security deed of trust that will complement the promissory note. The $109,000 requested is included in the FY 2023 capital budget for the purchase of the medic unit. We're recommending the Board of County Commissioners approve the Calvert Advanced Life Support's apparatus grant request and replacement of Medic 101, and authorize the Board President to sign the Fire Rescue Apparatus Grant agreement.
So Chris, while we have you here, this is a little off subject, but since I've participated in all those meetings, I get to hear what's going on. So while you have an opportunity, a lot of citizens don't understand that the Medic Advanced Life Support Unit was fully volunteer up until recently.
Yes, sir.
Had a little struggles, but if you wouldn't mind updating the public and my fellow Commissioners on where you are today with volunteer support.
Sure. So, yes, about three years ago, the county supplemented the volunteer system with a career EMS service. Calvert Advanced Life Support currently maintains 47 volunteer paramedics, and we basically provide coverage that supports the current career system during times of increased call volume and such, special events, all that kind of stuff. And we help offset high overtime costs that can be easily incurred. So we are still a vital service in this county. We still run about 4,000 calls a year, which is still incredibly high for a volunteer ALS service. And to note, we are one of Maryland's still largest and strongest volunteer ALS services in the entire state. We still continue to bring in volunteer paramedics from outside of Calvert County because we are one of the last systems that is still well-funded and well-equipped since a lot of systems through COVID suffered, and a lot of systems had to go career just because it was very difficult for families to survive. People just didn't have time to donate their time like they used to, and as you can imagine, nursing and paramedics became in very high demand. So anyone that had those certifications could easily find work. So we've been very lucky in being able to hold on to 47 volunteers, and it is a true feat, and it's a team effort that we've done between myself and yourselves with the representation of funding the projects that I try and offer to these paramedics. We do a great job, second to none, in attracting volunteers to come and help support our Calvert County citizens and make sure they're safe and protected and covered throughout all thick and thin, storms, all that kind of stuff, 365 days a year. So thank you for your ongoing support. We're still there, and we're going to keep going till there's only a handful of us left.
Thank you, Chris. Just thought it was an opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to thank you and your members for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
County Attorney. We have.
Yes, sir.
We're going to be talking about the other medic unit in just a second, and they look to be identical. Is it possible to make one motion for both medic units?
Yes, sir. You may consolidate 104 and 101.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
To approve the apparatus grant request for medic unit 101 and medic unit 104, and authorize the Board President to sign the grant agreement and all necessary documents reflecting this approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the apparatus grant request for medic unit 101 and unit 104, and authorize the Board President to sign the grant agreement and all necessary documents reflecting this approval. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those opposed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Have a great day, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Jim.
Item number six, under new business, Department of Economic Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development here for Calvert County.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today, I'm here to talk with you about the Rural Maryland Economic Development Grant Fund and our proposal requests for Calvert County and regional projects. In February of 2022, Governor Larry Hogan announced that $50 million in grant funds would be available to boost economic development activity, stimulate private sector investment, and grow jobs in the state's rural regions. Five regional councils representing the upper, mid, and lower eastern shore, southern Maryland, and western Maryland will submit proposals to the Maryland Department of Commerce outlining how they plan to use $10 million available through the Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund. The grant fund program is flexible, and it allows each rural council to determine the best use of funds with the counties they represent. Eligible uses of these funds include developing infrastructures such as utilities, transportation, broadband to support the attraction, retention, or expansion of businesses, and infrastructure related to specific industry sector development, including manufacturing, cybersecurity, and life sciences. Additionally, the funding can be used for workforce development and attraction of talent as well as projects that stimulate entrepreneurship and innovation. Planning and feasibility studies are also eligible, as well as certain capital and operational expenses. The funds may not be used for any direct incentive to the private sector. The Tri-County Council of Southern Maryland has asked the economic development departments from Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's Counties to develop a list of projects that could be funded from this fund. The Tri-County Council must submit a complete list to the Department of Commerce by September 2, 2022. I've submitted, for the record, my department for Calvert County's draft list along with proposed regional projects. We've met several times with the other economic development departments to share project ideas. We've also met with the Tri-County Council several times to share information. The attached list includes $2,477,000 for four projects that we recommend proposing for Calvert County, plus another five regional projects that total $1,657,700. The fiscal impact would be $380,000, of which $250,000 is already included in the capital budget for an open-air multi-use pavilion. The remaining fiscal impact could stem from grant support. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners sign a letter of support for the proposed Calvert County and regional project list and grant applications for submission to Tri-County Council for inclusion in their grant submission to the Maryland Department of Commerce. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Hearing none. Actions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second that we sign the letter of support for the proposed Calvert County and regional project list and grant applications for submission to Tri-County Council for inclusion in their grant submission to the Maryland Department of Commerce. All is recommended by staff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item is old business, first item under old business Department of Public Works, Fleet Fuel Card Pilot Program.
Brought out the heavy hitters this morning.
Heavy hitters.
No pun intended. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Kerry Doll, Director of Public Works, and to my right.
John Syper, Division Fleet Maintenance.
All right, gentlemen, today we got in front of you an opportunity to go ahead and take a look at this fleet card service that we basically run a pilot program. We had some delays in actually getting it to you. At the end of the day, we were probably ready to go at the end of May to present it, but ran into some presentation issues and everything like that. When I'm talking about it like that, I wanted to make sure that we could actually reflect the data so it would actually show you what we were doing. So.
You want to read through the memo? It might help our listeners out there understand some of the history.
I can do that, sir.
Thank you.
I'll run through the memo. So, background, on September 21st, 2021, the Department of Public Works requested and received permission from the Board of County Commissioners to conduct a pilot program using WEX fuel cards. The purpose of this pilot program was to gather information to determine whether the county should adopt a fleet fuel card to reduce the amount of fuel consumed during operations. The discussion? Pilot program for three consecutive months, January through March of 2022, during this trial period, 80 Department of Public Works vehicles using 87 octane gas were used. Staff fueled at various locations throughout the county. Data was collected and compared to the same number of vehicles over the last three years. Fiscal impact, although the price of fuel has more than doubled since 2020, Public Works believes it's demonstrated that using the fleet services card creates the following efficiencies when implemented. Reduces the cost of paying at the pump for severe weather response operations where you get a 18.3 cent gallon, per gallon deduction. Reduces the amount of fuel used when working in the northern and southern sectors of the county. Eliminates what we call windshield time, paying an employee up to an hour or more just to go get fuel. And then, of course, conclusions recommendations that we're asking for today. Public Works recommends the Board of County Commissioners do the following. Endorse the WEX fuel card program across all departments within county government. Direct Public Works to plan and implement a fielding plan for each department. Direct Public Works to establish a policy to leverage county bulk fuel station to the maximum extent practicable when within the Prince Frederick Town Center. So with that.
So, if I can, just for a minute.
Yes, sir.
So what precipitated this discussion, for those out there listening, was that currently the county has one fueling location, which is on, in Barstow on Stafford Road.
Yes, sir.
So every time the deputies or county, any county vehicle needs fuel, it has to come back to Prince Frederick and go down to Barstow on Stafford Road to refuel. And we did look at providing fuel in stations throughout the county, but that's very expensive. And then there's a liability associated with those fueling stations. So just for the public out there listening, that what's precipitated the investigation into this.
Yes, sir.
Project. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, we were directed essentially to run a pilot program, and at the end of the day, we were supposed to, the thought was, okay, we could do, we'll say, run a, go totally fleet card service, but when we looked at the data and from your guidance, you basically said that we are not going to lose any type of capacity at the county to have fuel on hand in the event of emergency for the simple fact that we needed those resources available to county in the event of emergency. So basically, it was maintained to bulk fuel capacity so we could then exercise it full-time. And as you, as we will point out as we go, there's probably some efficiencies in actually maintaining that, if you've already seen what I put in our recommendations. So to refresh your memory, we talked about running to get gas. Okay, you run to Lusby, Solomons, Chesapeake Beach, Dunkirk, you're going to spend anywheres from 45 minutes to an hour just getting gas. And what we did compute also is that it takes probably about six gallons of gas just to go get the gas. Okay? If we're looking at the Sheriff's Department, that could add up over a period of time where you're actually using a lot of fuel just to run a 12-hour shift, depending on how long that you're actually running back and forth to get fuel. So the, the challenge that we had when we first started looking at this, okay, was the, the cost per gallon. If you look at the chart there on the left, in 2020, look at the numbers that we were actually paying at the fuel pump. It's crazy. We were paying a dollar one in April of 2020 is what we were getting from that bulk fuel discount. Okay? That's just flat-out crazy. And as you can see, what's precipitated over since 2022, we are now paying more than double the price of the gas. Okay?
More than triple.
Now, pardon me, sir?
More than triple.
Exactly, exactly. More than triple at times, okay? Now, we've seen some stuff fluctuate up and down as far as the bulk fuel price goes, new contract developed, so on and so forth. And what we currently have right now, if you look at the, the data in like that tan color, that's your WEX fuel card with the discount. And what you'll know is it fluctuates. We talked about probably about a 50% discount over the price at the pump, but sometimes those prices are, are very based on the, on the contract when they set the prices, and then we get a straight 18.3 from WEX. So you'll see on days like, when you compare the month of, let's say, March, we were getting 384, what we were paying for WEX, but we're doing 347. So it was like somewhere in the neighborhood of like a 37-cent discount or 27-cent discount, excuse me, can't do the math there on the fly.
Kerry, is that card accepted everywhere?
Uh, yeah, we, I think it's 88 locations within Calver County.
I've had one a couple of times in my career, and that was the challenge, is being accepted everywhere, so.
Right.
We have acceptance throughout the county.
I mean, I, I'm going to throw a couple of names out there. Kenmore Liquors, you can use it there. You can use it at, in Huntington, what's the name of the?
Wawa Fast Ops.
I know there's 12 locations in the Prince Frederick area.
Okay, so plenty of availability.
And again, the, the measurable difference, I wish I was smart enough in all the math to figure out what actually we're spending in windshield time to go get the gas.
Did you say 88 locations in Calver?
Say again? I believe it's 80 plus, it's 80 plus, I'm pretty sure.
I didn't know we had 80-plus gas stations in Calver.
Sure we do. Almost.
That's, that means it's pretty much everywhere.
That's half as many liquor stores as well.
Yeah.
If I remember, I think it's some, somewhere in the neighborhood of 80. I could be wrong, but I believe that's.
A couple of seconds ago didn't get past me.
But it's, it's quite a few places that we actually have. It's, it's like you can get it anywhere practically, so. Now, so, that's the battle. So we went with measuring gallons is what we tried to get to, all right? So when we look at it, over total fuel used, and we, this is Public Works only, okay? In 2020, we had 67. You can see the effects of COVID on, you know, believe it or not, what we actually did in Public Works. You can see the large dip through March, April, and May as far as compared to the other years for the gallons used. And this is gallons used, this is straight up year-to-year, and 67 in 2020, 75 vehicles in 2021, and yes, we have 80 vehicles in Public Works now in 2022.
If you're easy math, is, I mean, you take two employees, let's just say it was minimum wage, and it was around $15, and that's 30 bucks an hour. They're going up to Prince Frederick and coming back to Lusby, it's an hour.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's a $30 savings.
Yes, sir.
Right there, and not including the production time that's lost out there, so it's, it's a no-brainer.
So, total few use, so what we did, when I tried to compare apples to apples, so what I did is we took the number of vehicles that were consistent across the three years, and we basically matched it up. If you existed in 2020, 2021, and 2022, and then, so we right-sized the numbers then as far as the total number of vehicles that we used. And I think that came out to about 50-some vehicles that were existed in all three years. And that's what came up with this next chart, okay? And you can see that, so, and then, then we also measured the snow events. That's one thing that we tried to do, where we actually measuring the inclement weather. So if I compare the, the large snow event in 2021, okay, we had 14 events during the month of February, and we did 6,239 worth of gallons. We had four more events in January of, in January of 2022, but we only used a small portion more in total gallons actually exercised out there. So we mobilized four additional times and actually ran snow operations four additional times during the month of January compared to February, and we only used, it's less than, what, it's just over 200 gallons more, okay, out of all the vehicles that were deployed doing that, that event. So if I look at January and February of the alternate years, that's where the lighter snow months that we had during that timeframe. We had two events in January of 2021, we had three in February, and if you look at that, in February, we only used 3997, and in January, we used 4690. Okay? What I'm saying is we use less gas for more snow events during the month, during those offset months. Now, there's probably other variables to, to play in there, but I will say, if you look at the bottom of the sheet there, on March, April, May, and June, because we actually extended it, we actually have July's numbers now, but we used 105 less gallons vehicle per vehicle over a three-year period, okay, in the month of March compared to, we'll just call 2021. So we used 105 gallons less for the vehicles that existed in all three years. And then in April, we used 327 gallons. Now, it fluctuates, so if you look at May and June, it actually bumped up a couple hundred gallons. But again, this, I like to go back that we're trying to do gallon per gallon what we used with the vehicles that existed in all three years. And again, the, the data shows that we're real close, and it's also that we're actually eliminating, as we said before, that windshield time going to get the gas.
Kerry, so I know how I had to do it in the past, I'm sure you probably got something much, this was in the Stone Age. Obviously, the card was assigned to a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
And to a mileage, receipt, mileage written down at the time, and then that way it was tracked like that. Is that still the way we, we track that, or is it a more efficient way?
No, sir, I track it every day, daily. Every transaction that goes through, they enter the card, they enter the mileage of the vehicle, then they enter their personal ID code.
Okay.
So I know exactly when, where, who, and what vehicle fueled.
Is that for every card?
Every vehicle that's assigned a card.
Every vehicle.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Yes, sir.
I remember panicking trying to find that one receipt sometimes.
Yes, sir.
We, I reconcile all those every day, make sure they're going up and up.
Awesome.
So, moving along, so the lessons we learned, okay? Obviously, reduce trips for fuel while on the clock. That's, that was feedback department-wide, from highway, from, from water and sewer to project management. When you combine the, the effects of the fleet fuel card with, we'll say, the vehicle take-home policy, some of the project managers go out, they fill up in Lusby, Solomons, and they'll stay down there the majority of the day or even all day and do their work from down there because they're with those projects in that neighborhood. So that works out that well, okay? Administration process is actually simpler than we actually realized, and the reason is, is because WEX essentially does the data for us. They do the spreadsheets, they do the card swipes, they send us the published reports, and then it's just a matter of us doing a, a check to pay the bill at the end of the month. And he does, this process right here was done by Fleet Maintenance for the entire time that we're doing it. And it was, it's rather simple. And if we pay our bill on time, we actually get a rebate for, for, for doing the, the stuff, transaction within the appropriate 30 days. And the one thing that I will say is that our employees made very good decisions. And this goes into that center of gravity where we have the Prince Frederick Town Center area, and we have that fuel cell. Guys who were going out before they left in the morning, they knew, realized they needed gas, they weren't going to go to an economy, they went to the pump where they could get the, the bulk fuel discount. And that goes from me pushing out that, hey, we get a better benefit from using the bulk fuel station because of the discount, but when you're out and about, if you have to come back, get it there rather than driving back to get the gas. Okay? So at the end of the day, they made good decisions, and decisions that, because they were informed, they just, they just made them on their own, did a real good job with that. Now, I will tell you, there was a little bit of complexity during the month of January. We were hit with a snowstorm within the first four days of the, the month, where there was probably a little bit of a learning curve that was very steep because we had guys filling up at the fuel station initially, but at the end of the day, it, it worked itself out really quick, and I, we, we adapted very well. So if I go back to the recommendation that I had for, who I want to present via the memo, we believe that we can use the WEX fuel card for all departments. I think Sheriff's Department would benefit greatly from it. I believe, and also, and in full, the county would benefit as far as the bill, if you will. And then Parks and Rec, I know that they would benefit from it. So if you look at everybody who's dispersed geographically across the county, and they have vehicles at their work locations, rather than driving into Prince Frederick to fill up their gas, they can just do it local and stay where they are, is essentially what we're trying to get at. Okay? So, direct, so we believe that if, for your recommendation, you know, direct us to plan and input a fielding plan for each department. I think we can do that, and I can do that through our Fleet Maintenance and our General Services Department. So we can, we can make that work through that, that process. And then, obviously, we can write a policy, and it can be a very simple policy that talks about leveraging the bulk fuel station for transactions that need to be done within the Prince Frederick Town Center, just like the lessons learned that we did when we were using it. The guys, before they went out, they fueled up before they went out at the Prince Frederick Town Center. So if you're within Prince Frederick Town Center and you realize, oh, I got to get gas, don't stop at the Wawa, okay, over there on Stokely Road, stop at the one, go back to the Prince Frederick Town Center, because if we're getting 50 cents off per gallon and 40 cents off a gallon, however it fluctuates, it's still a better benefit from doing it that, from that perspective, in my opinion. But I think if you're, as long as you're in the Prince Frederick Town Center, we should be leveraging that fuel station to actually maximize the dollar for the county as they do operations. And I don't need any backup slides, so, gentlemen, that's all I have. Your questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. President, I'd just like to comment on this. I've been a supporter of this since the first time Kerry and I've talked about it. Thank you for bringing that up. This is absolute best cost, best business practice that I can imagine as far as the stuff. Most bigger corporations, many smaller corporations do the same thing, so thank you for taking the initiative in order to treat the taxpayers' dollars the best way possible.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, adopting and approving, number one, the application of the WEX fuel card program across all departments within county government, two, directing the Department of Public Works to plan and implement a fielding plan for each department, and three, directing the Department of Public Works to establish a policy to leverage the county bulk fuel station to the maximum extent practicable, practicable within the Prince Frederick Town Center.
Sir.
I motion the second that we adopt and approve items one, two, and three. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I get one of those cards?
Oh.
You got to have the vehicle that matches.
Oh, shoot. Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is public comment.
And the Board has adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked, we remind speakers of public comment, that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance. Floor has been in for public comment. Those who are in the room may begin making their way to the microphone. There's nobody who's on the virtual meeting. You be asked to identify yourself and whether you're speaking as an individual or the designated representative of group. Individuals be given two minutes to speak. The designated representative of group will be given five.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. It's been a while. I just was wondering, I'm speaking for Friends of Hunting Creek, but does that WEX card apply inside Mike's store or just?
Ooh, no, no, it definitely does not.
Okay, just curious. Okay. I just heard yesterday that Calver County has received some good news in that they've won a climate resiliency grant. I don't know if you've heard, this is almost hot off the press. The purpose of the grant, and I quote this, is to support the development of a model using the most recent climate data to demonstrate the increased precipitation-induced blood risk for Calver County and inform stormwater management design, end quote. That's right from the DNR website. I don't know who wrote the grant, but I'd like to clap my hands for him, and I'll, and I'll do it again once I figure out who it is. I don't know, was that you, bud? No, okay, just curious. So you've heard me speak, and you've read what I've written about the inadequacy of the current data that is used for designing these systems compared to the, the local data that we have 15 years, well, changes every day because we take it every day. And this, anyway, and you know the harmful results when you under-design a system. That results in transport of pollutants to our beloved waterways and watersheds. So it's important to have the right data to get the right design. It's my hope that the result of the effort funded by this grant will be a realistic model of the current and future, because the future doesn't look brighter, it looks worse, future local rainfall quantities and intensities, which would then result in a more robust stormwater management designs and probably less maintenance because you're not gonna be breaking these things all the time. There's no other way for us to protect our watersheds, toxins in the bay, from the conveyance of these pollutants other than stopping it at the source. I would further hope that we would use the 15-year local stormwater data that we have in hand right now as an interim for designs that are coming up. This is, it's imperative that we not wait four or five years for a model to be produced and vetted, because every time you do that, you've opened yourself up for another possibility of failure. And I know this may not work in terms of businesses that are depending on exactly what we have written, but we can certainly do it for properties and installations that we, we control. And perhaps show an example of what you can do if you really want to. So hopefully, secondly, hopefully you've been able to read my opinion paper that I sent to you all perhaps yesterday morning regarding observations I've made for the Calvert-Pine Senior Center Stormwater System Repair. I've studied the plans for hours and hours and hours and hours because the plans are quite, quite detailed and required quite a bit of education on my part. And I don't, I'm not an expert, but I do know how to, to read plans up to a point. I, I've had discussions with public works, and I've submitted questions to public works and gotten some good answers. And I want you to know, I didn't testify earlier because I am in favor of this grant. I'm in favor of the repair, but I think that there's some areas that we need to potentially address. First of all, the, this effort is not intended to be a stormwater management system as we define currently, ponds and various bioretentions and that sort of thing. It's not that, it's just to get the water down to the stream without causing further erosion. There's no ESD techniques in here, although I've heard that there's a potential that there may be some ESD techniques in the future. I don't know any more about it than just, just that. The repair design, again, was done with old data, 10-year, one-day storm, 5.7 inches, but we have data that shows that that kind of storm doesn't happen once every 10 years. It happens here in Calvert County every 1.6 years. Quite a, quite a differential. And further, there, over the same span, there are three storms that would have fit in the 20 to 50-year category. When these storms hit, and they hit these systems hard, what happens? Do they fail gracefully, or do they just overflow, resulting in more erosion and back to the same problems that you thought you were fixing? So it's important to use the right data. Does that mean? Okay. And lastly, there is an opportunity to deploy a pond-like system at the bottom of Site B, which I have sent, and you can see in the paper, and I hope that perhaps public works will consider that.
Shorter. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Joe Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself, and I'll try and get through this thing. Whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice and discrimination, of violence and hatred based on race, ethnicity, religion, class, gender, identity, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical disability, and to be supported by their peers and educators. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual communities made significant contributions in both our community and around the world. And whereas the historical riot at Stonewall in New York City on June 28, 1969 is considered a turning point for the LGBTQ liberation of the United States. And whereas more than 50 years due and celebrated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month nationwide in honor of the LGBTQ plus citizens that rose up and fought discriminatory laws at Stonewall as well as to celebrate members of the LGBTQ plus community today. And whereas Calvert County strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for our differences rather than being limited by what might divide us. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of June 2022 be known as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Calvert County, and be it further proclaimed that we commend the many ways in which the LGBTQ plus community and Americans have contributed to the history, culture, and social fabric of the nation of Calvert County, given under our hands and seal this 15th day of June 2022. This proclamation was supposed to be presented here in front of the Board of County Commissioners with students and staff and community members invited. Unfortunately, it was removed from the agenda due to scheduling issues. Organizers were told, that I heard, that they wouldn't have space to bring all the students, which I find curious because we've had entire football teams in this room. Organizers were told, that I heard, that there wasn't time for this proclamation because we had a Flag Day event scheduled at noon, and we couldn't be late for that. It was subsequently rescheduled the Elk Lodge due to weather. Again, I find that curious because usually you have no problem taking photos and discussing achievements with any other proclamation. Commissioner McConkey was the sole member of this board to even recognize the proclamation, coming down in person to present it at the Board of Ed in a special meeting to present. Since no mention this proclamation has showed up on the county website or any social media page, another curious occurrence because your social media team celebrates everything that happens and puts out a constant stream of information relevant to the community from paper shredding and tire recycling to the color of new mulch. When the five of you signed this letter regarding the mask mandates, it was put up within hours. Your social media team had no time wasted getting a copy of that to every citizen. If the five of you sign this, you should be proud.
Mr. Cormier, please wrap up your comments.
Yes, sir. If you were tricked, if you were bamboozled, if you didn't like it, make another motion to dissolve it and not, but if you signed it, be proud of it. You know, our kids deserve better. Thank you so much.
So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. We mentioned it at the start, the passing of Malcolm Fund. I just personally wanted to say, you know, me and Malcolm became friends years ago, and he was involved in everything. I mean, I can't think of something that, that Malcolm didn't touch. And we had a really great relationship, and I used to, used to like to go up to him and say, I would see him in a room somewhere, and I'd say, hey, I hear there's some fun somewhere. And he would grab me and say, well, you know, if you're gonna have fun, you gotta have heart. And Malcolm, that was for you, buddy. We did that for years, and I, he will truly be missed, and, and I will miss Malcolm. So I'm sure over the next couple of days, there will be so many people telling great stories about Malcolm, but he, boy, he would light up a room, and, and I will truly miss him. Me and Commissioner Gadway and Commissioner Hans, we were at the Eagle Scout for Xavier Daley, Matthew Mayer, and Andrew Sephra? I said that right? Three outstanding young individuals. And I also want to thank, with the election that just passed, it takes so much for that to happen, so many volunteers, and so much infrastructure goes into place. And I just want to thank everybody that was involved in making it happen, the people participated. This time, we were able to get it televised to help people have more informed decisions. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved with that and the community as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Cormier?
Nothing to report today, sir.
Commissioner Gadway?
I'd also like to start off with my condolences to Malcolm Fund's family and his son. Although I didn't have an opportunity to know Malcolm for as long as Commissioner Hart, I did know him over the last year, thoroughly enjoyed listening to his stories and his wealth of knowledge and his history lessons. When I heard the news the other day, I was shocked, and I just, I do want to let the family know that we are thinking of him. Couple weeks ago, I had the grandson, and I was able to take him to one day at summer camp. That's kind of an oddity for me because I'm normally on the road by that point in time, but I took him, and kudos to our Parks and Rec people because they took a very unorganized me going into a summer camp to drop off a grandson, not knowing exactly certain which door to go through because I had to ask my eight-year-old grandson, which door do they normally take you through? And he said, well, that one over there, pop, pop. So anyway, kudos to Parks and Rec, and thank you for doing all that you guys do for the kids and the families throughout our county through the summer camp program. Again, the, the Eagle Scouts, every single time we go to these, it is amazing because we truly get to see, and I'm saying Eagle Scouts this time because we didn't have the opportunity to do a Girl Scout Gold Ceremony in the past same period of time, but through all of those organizations, when the, when the young adults reach that, that peak in that organization, it's just great to be able to see that and play a small role in the appreciation shown to them. I'd like to also congratulate the Republican primary winners, Buddy, Hans, Todd Ireland, Mike, Catherine, and Mark Cox. You guys, I look forward to working, well, I, I look forward to working with you at a different capacity in the future. You guys are gonna be great. And on a closing, so many times over the past year, I sat there and I would make comments about the YouTube videos that many of you might be watching right now. When I started, we had a little over 200 subscribers. We needed 1,000 subscribers to get free closed captioning. And over the course of the last two-week period, we added over 100-plus subscribers, so we are now over 1,090 total subscribers on YouTube. If you're new to watching this, please reach down and hit the subscribe button. And if you want notifications each time a new video is uploaded, please hit that bell icon. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weems?
I too want to extend my condolences to the Fund family, as well as the Williams family, Ms. Alberta Williams, which was Mr. Pat Nutter, Commissioner Nutter's mother-in-law. And that's all I have to report.
So for those of you watching, we were told today that Parks and Rec is to be able to extend pool hours at King's Landing Camp. So if you use that facility, check the website, and you'll see that now they have been able to secure some more lifeguards, and they've been able to extend those hours. And to want to thank all the people that came out and voted in the primary of either party. You know, when you look at the amount of people that vote, it's very disheartening, to be honest. I know we have 67,000 registered voters in Calvert County, and I haven't seen the official end results, but I don't think, it's probably only about 15,000 that actually voted in the primary total. So we're gonna try to get Gail in here next week. We get a wrap-up report of the election, how things went and what went wrong, and things we can fix and improve in the future. So we're gonna try to work on that. And besides Mr. Fund and Ms. Alberta Williams, who served me a mania meal at Wasten's Corner Restaurant in the tobacco days. I lost my Uncle Rodney last week. Was my father's brother. Those of you that grew up in Calvert County and knew Uncle Rodney, he was one of those people that everybody liked. He always had a good time and served Calvert County as the deputy sheriff back in the 60s. And if I remember right, I think he was the only deputy we had at that time. We just had a sheriff and a deputy. He drove a, I still remember, drove a black 68 Ford 500 Galaxy, had a red bubble light on the roof, no other signage or markings or nothing. Still remember that. And then at the end of his career, he worked at Parks and Rec, managed, I think he managed Dunkirk Park when he finally retired. But retired, moved to Delaware because taxes are cheaper for retirees. But Rodney, I'll never forget Rodney. He was a great man, and as a young, young child growing up, I always loved when Uncle Rodney come pick me up and take me somewhere, especially the country club to the pool because there weren't a lot of pools back in those days, and that was a big treat for us. So go miss Uncle Rodney and wish Ann the best. And then just a last reminder, tonight's National Night Out, we have several communities that participate in National Night Out. As Commissioner Gadway said earlier, you know, you shouldn't do that once a year, you should try to do that multiple times during the year, pull your communities together, it's what makes us what we are. And we're very fortunate in Calvert County that not only police, but fire, rescue EMS participate in those nights out, give kids an opportunity to climb on a fire truck or an amulet, and, and there's usually food at those events, so the volunteers greatly appreciate that. So just want to encourage everybody, if your neighborhood is doing a night out event, please participate. And the Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department Carnville starts tonight up at the school, old school grounds here in Prince Frederick. So that'll be running until Saturday night. Ask you to come out, support the Prince Frederick Fire Department, have a little fun, and help them raise a few funds. So with that, I believe, Commissioner Weems, you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir. Like to make a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to 3-305B4 to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for a business to locate, expand, or remain in the state.
Second? Have motion to second. Are we going to executive session? Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Everyone, you have a great day.